Everybody to the word of that icebox.
It's better than tea.
Yeah, well, exactly. Yes. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance as always.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and without any justice at all.
Are they there?
They're there already.
Oh, all right.
It's like they need walk-up music, right?
We should have had a little walk-up music. Fill right in. All right. You got a turnout, huh?
Couple of world athletes.
Well, welcome, everybody. So we'd like to welcome Coach Rick Pontotakis, the coaching staff, and a bunch of the kids here. So this is long overdue. We have a little tradition here lately as we've had a great kind of run in the girls' sports side at Simsbury High School to bring state champions forward for recognition. So you guys played that big game after the year already ended. So we didn't get a chance to do that. So we wanted to do that early on in the year. So it was awesome. So I have a couple. I talked to Coach this morning. I got a couple of fun facts.
Nice.
All right. So this is a team that made it to the state championship game the prior year. Lost to Massacre, correct?
Yep.
And then beat Massacre in the semifinals. So they finished eighteen and three on their way to a state title game. We were at, a bunch of us were at that game. Awesome environment down at Fairfield University. And really a dominant, dominant performance over Cheshire High School, which is Coach Rick's alma mater. And mine. So it was kind of, kind of made it even sweeter. So a real dominant performance by the kids. And this is just a super talented team. There were six girls that made all-conference. Six girls that made all-state. It's just unheard of. And I believe ten of twelve starters coming back. So the expectations are not low. But wow, they play the right way. They play for each other. They play with great motivation and spirit. Coach, you've done a great job and your coaching staff with the program since you've been aboard. And we couldn't, couldn't thank you guys enough for what you do in the school spirit. So awesome job. Look forward to seeing some more games. We have some exciting news, too. One of your top players just committed to Princeton as well. Big time things going on with this program.
Actually, she's at soccer practice.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, can we get a quick picture?
Yeah, that'd be good.
We gotta get that.
We do. I don't know that the banner's up yet, is it? It's in, it's not up.
It's on the stool board. I look everywhere.
All right, let's say lax. One, two, three, lax. Lovely.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. We know you're busy. We're not gonna make you stay.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Bye-bye. It was nice to see you all. Hopefully, we'll see you again next year.
If you have daughters, they should have a lacrosse stick.
I hope you know I've been recruiting.
She's gonna sleep with it.
Might as well. Thank you, coaches.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Fun fact. We should make that for every meeting. Every meeting, we have a fun fact.
There should be a fun fact.
He kept feeding me so many fun facts. I'm like, oh, I gotta know.
Well, that's great.
I was gonna say you'll get some fun facts next month.
I love this meeting. I forgot.
I don't think we have public audience, but just let me. Okay, perfect.
We would have it if we had public. We just don't have public.
So committee reports and communications. Let's start with Eva Berry, our latest student representative.
Yay, I'm happy to be here.
Welcome.
From Ms. Seidel, I have three things. First, the Choices Matter program from the Connecticut Highway Department is coming back to the high school to speak with students ten and eleven about distracted driving as they come into new licenses. And the seniors, which was my class, had this two years ago. And we're doing a different program for us in the fall. The music department is also hosting the Nothing But Treble. Oh, this is Night of Talent. I'm so sorry. The music department is hosting Night of Talent on Friday the third. And staff members are performing. Mr. Cassi's doing pull-ups, if anyone's familiar. Do go. It's gonna be exciting. It's for the friends of Soodry Music. And then we have PSATs on next week on October eighth for nine, ten, and eleven, and it's a half-day.
Good. Great. Josh?
As far as committee, thank you, Katie, for getting the comms committee meeting set up. So we're gonna have three again this year, October twenty-fourth, January ninth, April twenty-fourth. So we'll stagger those around when we have activities going out. So more to come once we have that, but those are on the calendar. So that'll be good. And then just not committee-related, but just to kind of Rick and the lacrosse team, just kind of a shout-out there to them. Not only is like a great team and a great thing he's doing there, but I know he and his players are involved in like this Grow the Game initiative in town. I'm on that with them, having coached lacrosse. And like they're putting in their time on Friday nights to do like these clinics over like the Christmas vacation to do these clinics for like the youth program. So again, it's not just a team that's doing well in high school. It's a team and a coaching staff that's like committed to the game throughout the town. So I just wanted to throw it out there. It's very commendable what they're doing with kind of what they have and, you know, trying to make it best for the whole town. So appreciate that.
Nothing committee-wise, just great job Simsbury Lax.
Right.
Yeah, just a quick update for the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. We are well into our negotiations, our talks with the SEA. And we wrap things up next week on Thursday with our mediation night. And yeah, it should be another three-year contract. So things are looking good.
Great.
Yeah, we had opening with Cave and the Commissioner came to speak with us on the State Board of Education. And this year, the Commissioner's message, I know Matt, when you went to your school opening with the Commissioners and Superintendent, you prepared the same thing. And it's about unlocking lifelong, unlocking lifelong potential. So the Commissioner spoke about many things that are happening within the state. Test score gains, attendance, and a number of different investment, Connecticut investments and a number of things. You can all go on the Connecticut STE portal and everything about every district, you know, including attendance and curriculum and what have you. So it's always interesting to hear the Commissioner come and give her back-to-school report. On the crack front, we have a great school opening. We have nine thousand one hundred students in climbing. And we, that are our crack students, within our schools and programs. And we have seven hundred busines. So that is quite a feat for a district to be able to handle every year. The more important thing is, is that on the legislative front, again this year, I know I always sound like a broken wreck in beating the drum, but if there's a special session this year, which many of you heard about, you know, this could include the pieces of the leftover ed reform from last spring after session is over. School security changes, again, the civic seal on diplomas, high school graduation requirements. They're constantly tweaking that and they're including PD in that. They're legislating another mandates council, even though we already have one and we already have existing mandates. And this is where we are, again, the lack of magnet funding. And we're starting off the year just continuing from last year. So that's where we are with that. So it's always great to start the school year off with some positive legislative news.
Nice. Jen?
Thank you.
We had our first curriculum meeting this morning. And so I can just give you a quick update. The high school English Language Arts spoke to us about a couple of things. One, the writing center. We had Linda Myron talking about a new tutor's book to teach tutors to tutor better and to classify a consistent system of working with the English language class, helping the kids write better. And I wrote notes and they're all too small for me to read. But they, she has twenty-five students that actually work in the writing lab, which I thought was really interesting and very, and they are doing it, some are doing it as they're capstone, they're interns. So this all goes as, it's all programmatic and it's very, very cool. And, you know, I think her message to us was we're really trying to get the word out so that kids feel comfortable going in there and getting the stuff they need from the tutors and from the teacher who supports them. So it was great to hear. It seems like it's really positive. And it's a really important, I think, piece to, because you can go whenever you need. You don't have to go for a long period of time. You can go for one paper or, you know, a whole class if you have issues. So, or help, need a little bit of help, which we all do. And then the other piece was they have a couple texts that they're trying to work into the new curriculum in AP Language. So we are looking at those, reading through them, and more to come on that. Really exciting was Jacqueline Patella and Amy, Beth Kepler?
Kleber.
Kleber. Kleber. And they worked really hard with a fabulous group of people. A fabulous whole committee of people who worked all summer to put together into one handbook, study skills handbook. And they're putting study skills in Henry James and they're working hard to get that aspect of organizing students, Google Classroom, and how to use it better and how, and this is available to all parents, too. If you want one, contact Henry James and they can get one. But it was, they've already had a meeting and they had a lot of parents come to the first meeting to discuss it. And the kids are working on it in the, in school. They worked on it the first couple of days. And it's, I am really excited about this. I think it's a really great place and great, a ton of resources and ideas for kids to help them in a very simple, don't-stress way, you know, smarter, not harder.
Yes. They use their knowledge and wisdom for working with middle school kids. They've been consulting with outside supports for students who are experts in the area. So they took information from them. And they provided general study skills, but also study skills that are very applicable for certain content areas. So they will be teaching into these skills within the content classes as well as in their, some of their connections. So it's exciting.
It's very exciting. It's very needed. And I think we could all take a short-term class on it.
No, that's great. We've talked a lot about studying, how to study on this board. And so that's really great.
It's exciting. I was thrilled and they did a great job.
So to every student at Henry James, get one of those?
Yes. I think they all have already.
They have or they don't?
They already have. The first couple of days, they set up, they have, and they worked on setting up Google Classroom, getting involved in there, invested in, setting up their own Google page for how they can. And what she said, what was interesting was that everyone's gonna have a checklist of their classes and their things so that they can still check things off, even though it's like a paper instead of a digital piece. They can actually still check it off as having done it. And she also said that there is an app, Connect, where you can see your kid's name. You put in your child's name and all of his classes will come up. And so you'll know, you'll be able to check in with that, too, as a parent. Right? It was pretty cool.
Yeah, it's great. They worked very hard to develop consistent expectations for Google Classroom because they were finding with well-intended teachers that it was looking different on the kid end and on the parent end. And that's hard to manage. So creating those consistent expectations is going to translate to clarity for kids, for parents, and for teachers. So certainly more to come, but some significant summer work that the group of educators did and shared with us today.
That's great.
So excited.
Appreciate it.
Nothing additional right now.
Tomorrow's October first, so Laura Schellman and I will conduct the annual counting of the children. We're looking forward to it. And we'll be here in two weeks to tell you how high we come.
Line them all up. Amy? I don't have any.
All set.
All right. Just keep rolling. All right, first on the agenda is the approval of the September ninth meeting minutes. I'm sure everybody's looked at them and reviewed them. Use our study skills that we just talked about. Make a move, a motion to move quickly with the minutes. Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Great. One extension. Onto personnel.
Yeah, we have two early in the year resignations that we need to talk about. One is squadron line teacher Juan Gonzalez. Juan has been with us here in Simsbury for seven years. He did the first decade of his career in a more urban school district, came to Simsbury, and has kind of had the calling to go back to the urban setting and, you know, that experience at the end of his career. So Juan was with us until September nineteenth. We are using one of our building subs to fill in in that class. And then we're, Meg Evans has begun the hiring process. So Allison Murphy Shay was in a role, it's a hard role to explain. She mostly, we have to facilitate PPTs at all the private schools in town and some of the magnet schools. And she does some PPTs at Simsbury High School. So Allison moved to North Carolina this summer. And in a second, you'll see that we actually found somebody highly skilled to replace a difficult job. So congratulations to Allison, but she did resign that position in August.
So we need a motion.
That the Board of Education accept the resignations of Juan Gonzalez effective September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and Allison Murphy Shay effective August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to, I don't know Allison Murphy, so I can't speak to her, but to Mr. Gonzalez, Juan Gonzalez. He's an excellent teacher, really wonderful for our students, and it's sad to see him go.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second action that requires your vote is a guaranteed leave of absence for the year. Brianna Downey became a new mother. She's in grade one at Terriffill School. And this was a situation where we had hired a teacher at Terriffill School last year who we had to do a reduction in force because it was only a one-year appointment. So this is kind of the completion of the plan to keep that teacher around. And Brianna will be taking this full year with a guarantee to return at the start of next full year.
Great.
I move that the Board of Education approve the leave of absence for Brianna Downey effective August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six with guaranteed position upon her return.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
And then just appointments that don't require your vote, but I'll go through them quickly. Beth Doozy is the first one. This is the person who we are going to replace Allison Murphy Shay's position. Beth, you know, very complex work running complex PPTs. And that's exactly the work that Beth was doing in Hartford for the past decade. And then there was some reconstituting of positions in Hartford. She was looking for an escape valve and couldn't believe that this job opened up. And so we brought Beth right in here and Maggie and Katie Crystal met with her. She just started, I believe, last week. Tara Patagliero is returning to us. She was a speech and language pathologist. This is a very small, part-time position, point four, so it's two days a week up at Central School. And we'll cover that caseload. And then Jonathan Prell, you may recall at the last meeting, we had a math teacher at Henry James resign in the first three days of school. Jonathan is a recent Simsbury High grad. Went up to school in Maine. He was, and excellent, he coaches track for us. He was an excellent track athlete, all-state in high school. He's still gonna continue doing that. And he got both a certification in elementary education with a concentration in math up at the University of Maine and has been a middle school math teacher for the past year and is excited to return to Henry James. Doesn't, he starts tomorrow, but he already has been here. He met all the parents on open house night. And John is super excited. I'm looking forward to having him at Henry James.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you. Acceptance of the gift from the Gridiron Club?
Yes, there's actually two gifts for your consideration this evening in accordance to your policy. Any gift that exceeds one thousand five hundred dollars requires your approval. So the first is from the Simsbury Gridiron Club. It's a gift of three thousand dollars to offset the costs of light rental for the grass fields at the high school. So there is a motion there for your consideration. I will move that the proposed gift of three thousand dollars from the Simsbury Gridiron Club be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just we appreciate it very much so their kids aren't practicing in the dark. All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you. Next one?
Great. The second is from the PTO organizations of all of the elementary schools specific to their cultural enrichment committee. So this committee is in charge of bringing cultural programs to all five of the elementary schools. Last year, it was Latin beat dancing, Japanese drums, and bamboo flutes, as well as poetry in motion. So this year coming up will be Chinese acrobats and Mexican dance and culture. So these are very high-energy programs. They're always loved by the kids and staff alike. The gift is in the amount of twenty-one thousand fifty-one dollars. And that will cover all programming this year at all five elementary schools. There's a motion there for your consideration.
Move that the, so Melissa? Josh, you.
Move that the proposed gift of funds from all the elementary school parent-teacher organizations to provide cultural programming to elementary school students be accepted.
Terry, one second.
Second. I'm in a second.
Any discussion?
Joseph, this is such a wonderful thing that PTOs do every single year. And they bring such incredible programming. We're really lucky and really appreciative of all the effort that the PTOs take on their shoulders to embrace this money. So thank you.
And it's a lot for that committee. That's a big committee that has to buy back all the schools and stuff. It's kind of, it's a good committee. It's nice. It's a lot of work they do.
I remember mine. That's how fun they were. Like, I remember exactly what they did.
That's awesome.
No better endorsement than right there. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Academic report.
Academic report. We welcome the high school team here this evening. It's great to see everybody. Ms. Seidel, we have Georgia Robert, Ken Para, Assistant Principals.
We're gonna do some wave switches.
I know. I'm just saying, new Scott Redman. Welcome, Scott. And Mr. Stillman as well, our Director of Counseling. So while, Jen, your favorite report is ten-one, this is one of my favorites. An opportunity to hear the results from Simsbury High School last year as they align with strategic plan and new kickoff this year in terms of what their focus areas are. So a lot of great things going on and certainly an opportunity for the board to ask any questions that they have.
All right. We're backwards, huh? You set me up. Just wanted to see if I was ready.
That's our presentation?
All right. Well, good evening, everyone.
I'm sitting on fire over there.
Excited to be here tonight with you to share with you our school report that closes the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we'll also take an opportunity to share with you our priorities for the upcoming year, as Mr. Curtis just shared. I'm excited to have our whole team here, inclusive of our newest member, Scott Redman, that we've put right through the gauntlet. We weren't gonna have him, you know, present anything tonight, but we actually found that every picture of the slides that he will be presenting, he was there for. His first week was quite action-packed, so. All right, so to sum up the year twenty-four, twenty-five, it was really about setting the foundation. When we think about some really important foundational elements, they came last year in terms of our systems. When we think about those systems in the classroom, our cellphone policy, huge foundational element that got put into place. Kids are really good about it. And that was a huge piece of the work from last year. That inclusive of our attendance policy, making sure that we really had students thinking about the importance of the minutes in the classroom, the impact when they're not there or if they're late. And also really making sure that our students knew that we're not an open campus, that there are certainly opportunities for them to come in late and to leave early as they become juniors and seniors. But we do need to adhere to our policy. So we really made sure that those are clear, our students and our families. We've found when we make the expectations clear and we really outline them for people, they're really great about adhering to things. So that was certainly a foundational element from last year. Also, our student intervention structure. How are we supporting students if they've got additional needs? So those things were all part of our work from last year. Establishing clarity, making sure that really clear expectations, protocols, both for teachers, for students, for all of us and our expectations of each other, we're set forward. Also foundational element of our culture, making sure that we're setting some really cool traditions in terms of our school spirit, but also listening to our students around what they want. So those things all really set us up to gather what we've been calling our Year of Momentum. When we left the year last year, it was really a relief because we had done a lot, but we also knew what the work was moving forward. And that's really where we came into our theme for this year, which is gathering momentum. The idea that these small wins, the consistency, you know, really honing in, lead to powerful results. And we've already seen a lot of these and there's certainly more to come. So tonight, we want to showcase the results of the year really in two major buckets. And then we're going to share with you our priorities for the upcoming year. So in student growth and success, we'll start with our AP celebrations. This slide, to sum it all up, is really about students accessing opportunities to stretch themselves. These numbers are super, super impressive. So last year, we had four hundred and ninety-one students take at least one AP class. If you remember, AP is really available for eleventh and twelfth graders. We have a few opportunities as a sophomore, but four hundred and ninety-one students took that opportunity and many of them taking more than one. One thousand sixty-one tests were taken. And eighty-nine percent of those, the students achieved a three or better with nine hundred and twelve of those tests meeting that three or higher criteria. So that's really, really high. Last year, it was eighty-four percent achieving that, and now we're up to eighty-nine percent. And again, this is one at the bottom. Eighty percent of our seniors who graduated last year took at least one AP course. It was sixty-three percent the year before. So what we've seen is our students really taking that opportunity to stretch themselves, to really step out of their comfort zone. So that change and that shift, I think, is really, really impressive when it comes to our AP. The next-generation science scores are very, very consistent. This particular test, we continue to showcase just very strong results, being third in the DIRG with eighty-five point three percent of our students reaching goal or above goal. And if you can see over the past three years, it's all within two points. Eleven twenty-nine was the average score, eleven thirty, eleven twenty-eight. So what that tells us, our teachers have clarity of expectations in terms of the curriculum. They know how to help and support students and they really have that alignment of the curriculum. And their assessments are showing what the kids know, what they need support with, and how to consistently do that over time. I think the most impressive data on here is our subgroup data. When we look at our percentage of special ed students that are at or above, we're the highest we've been in three years with sixty-two point five percent. I like to see it out of a fraction. Those percentages are great, but how many students? So that's what that is, that thirty out of forty-eight students were at or above goal. Hundred percent of our students from the choice program were at or above. And it's the highest score in three years of our students of color achieving at or above goal. So this one certainly continues to knock it out of the park, but it's our subgroup data that's really, really impressive. SATs, we know this is coming up in terms of our PSAT, which is that prerequisite. In English, we had, this is a year of growth. This particular class, really what I want you to focus in on, they took the PSAT last October, the SAT in the spring. The amount of growth throughout the years for this particular cohort of students was really impressive. It speaks to their consistency, those small wins, but also about our teachers and where they hit those instructional marks to help students from that beginning threshold to where they ended up. So in English, we were fourth in the DIRG. At the PSAT in the fall, we were at seventy-nine point six percent being college-ready. By the end of the year, this particular cohort was eighty-three point four percent. The big thing, too, is when you break it down- The big thing too is when you break it down and look at the domain scores, those are those little scores within the whole. Expression of ideas went from sixty-six point one to eighty-five point five percent. So they really honed in on instruction. The English conventions is another area that we've struggled with in the past that also had a significant increase from where the students, this particular cohort was from the previous year to the end of the year. I can't say it enough, they put at the bottom, the teacher there, you know, they're honing in, they're watching how kids are doing. We did use iXL, which is a platform. We did use different interventions to support kids. And we used the resources from College Board that allowed kids to see the type of questions that they're being asked, because many times they're just phrased very differently than what they're typically used to. When it comes to math, we were ranked sixth in the DURG. And again, this particular group of students, I don't think it's the overall performance that, you know, is really staggering or we want to continue to improve, but this particular group went from forty-four point six being college ready to fifty-five point seven. Again, those subgroup, that those domain scores, algebra, we know kids need to have when they leave us. That shift in the algebra sub-score from thirty-one point eight to fifty-two point five is really a significant growth. And I do want to say that our students from the class of twenty-twenty-five who graduated this past year, they certainly performed higher than the class of twenty-twenty-six, but the class of twenty-twenty-six grew more. So that to me just shows the work that they put in over the year. So yes, you can certainly look and compare those two cohorts comparative to each other, but when we look within, I think it's really impressive that our current seniors, the amount of growth over the course of the year was certainly something to be celebrated for sure. And again, we did a breakdown and looked at particular teachers, how those teachers, where their kids were from PSAT to SAT, and it was mind blowing. Something that we're also gonna be tapping into to say to teacher, hey, instructionally, what did you do? How did you shift this? What, so there's so much to be gained and learned from those, both in English and in math. So that's where we landed the year, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Stillman to talk a little bit about SAT and other areas of growth.
So as Maggie just mentioned, the SAT scores were just up there. That's a March test. We always administer the PSAT in the fall, usually the second or third week in October, and we administer that to grades nine, ten, and eleven. And really, what we say to the students is, the P stands for practice. The more you practice something, the better you're gonna get at it. So we really want all grade levels to take it seriously, but also know that there's multiple opportunities to take the PSAT, and it's all gonna lead to your preparation for the SAT. Last year, Maggie had some students who put on a night for some parents that were invited to come, and what the students did, they did a great job of showing how you can take your PSAT results and prep using the available tools through College Board, through Khan Academy, and really for, for free, do some SAT prep to get yourself ready for the March SAT. And there's plans to do that again this year at some point in between the PSAT and the SAT, the SAT being administered on March eighteenth. Alright, in terms of the, the counseling department, it's always our goal as a counseling department to ensure that all of our students have a post-secondary plan that aligns with their interests, their values, and their goals. And I want to show you a little bit of how we did last year and what are some of our goals going forward this year. So during our application season, as you can see, seventeen percent of our graduates were accepted to a most competitive college. We deem the most competitive college a combination of the top fifty universities and top fifty liberal arts colleges using the US News and World Report rankings, which is a well-known ranking list. We had some individual colleges that were impressive. We had students accepted at Princeton, Columbia, Harvard, Cal Berkeley, Williams. We had two at Georgetown, two accepted to Yale. So some really, you know, according to US News and World Report, some top, top colleges out there. I say that because for us, it's about finding the best fit for our students. So whether that's one of the top one hundred colleges, whether that's a state school, whether that's going across country, we want our students to seek out those opportunities, whether it's academic, whether it's location, whether it's a financial decision, what's the best fit for those students. And it's not a four-year college for everybody. We had almost ten percent of our students go to two-year college. Again, with the state two-year college program being a free option for students right out of high school, it's a great opportunity for students, whether they want to go for two years or continue after that to continue for four years.
How many students went to tech schools?
It was a lower percentage this past year. I think it was only a couple, it was only a handful of students that went this past year. So we're at ninety percent of four-year and two-year military was one percent. The remaining percentage, there remaining eight or nine percent was the tech schools going right off to work or still deciding what they want to do, taking a gap year and figuring it out. And that's the last bullet right there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you have any of those numbers for last year as it compares, like are you?
Yeah, so I, the most competitive college, that was around nineteen percent last year. It always hovers around that seventeen to twenty percent. We were lower in the four-year graduate. It was seventy-six percent going to four-year, and it was fourteen percent going to two-year. So the combination was still ninety percent going off to college. It was just more two-year last year than it was this past year, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
This might be for Maggie, I don't know. For the SAT scores, I remember this conversation last year. What do they consider college-ready for EL for English and Math? What is that number?
Yeah, four eighty and five ten.
At the SAT, not the SAT, it goes up for five thirty, reading and four eighty math. It goes up from, is it?
Four eighty English.
Four eighty English and five thirty Math.
Five thirty, okay, so they think it's a higher number for math, which, I remember this conversation.
And I don't have an answer for why, that is.
It just reinforces why our numbers aren't as good.
It's statistically, that number represents the likelihood of a student achieving a C or better in a college math course. The algorithm behind it, I couldn't tell you, but that's what that number is supposed to represent.
So one of our goals as a counseling department the past few years has really been to look at our counseling curriculum and focus on career education for college and non-college bound students. You know, whether students are going off to college or not going off to college, at some point, the goal is to have a career. So creating these opportunities for students to explore careers while they're in high school, we feel gives them a better opportunity when they graduate high school to know what path they want to take. I'm gonna share a couple things that we've done last year and some things that we're currently working on. One, many of you may be aware of NAVYANCE. We've had that program for over about twenty years. It's our career in college database, and we are switching over to a new program called SchoolLinks. We've done a lot of research on the difference between NAVYANCE and SchoolLinks, including talking to a lot of high schools that have switched over. There's a lot of similarities with the two. You can see the, the college data and the scattergrams of how students at our school have done getting into various colleges. There's interest and personality inventories that they can take. But what people have said is that the interface is a little more student friendly. So, you know, we decided to make that switch over, and we're, we've already, our current seniors have access to SchoolLinks and will be onboarding the underclassmen during the school year.
Have you tried it even?
Oh, it's so much better.
Okay, thank you.
It connects to your Common App. So when you're doing college stuff, the NAVYANCE, you had to do it separately. So if you were applying to college in Common App, you had to do it all. So in NAVYANCE, you can do everything through Common App or SchoolLinks, and it like connects it together, so I don't have to do both.
Takes so much time.
So it's so much better. And it was so redundant, like doing the NAVYANCE and the Common App, because the Common App is the only one that anybody sees. The NAVYANCE is just for school, so it was like silly.
Thank you. I want to put a plug in for our Capstone program. We're very supportive of that in the counseling department. They've done a great job of connecting students with internships, if that's an area that the students want to go into. Just a few that they did last year. We had students work at McLean Retirement Home, State Farm Insurance, Select Physical Therapy, and M and M Auto, but we had almost twenty students doing internships through the Capstone program. Liz McKay, Baird Faithful, who are our Capstone teachers. They also organized a panel on green careers last year. So they had sustainable engineering and solar representatives come in and talk to students who are interested in that field. They're gonna be doing a trades panel this year, which they did two years ago, and again, giving students opportunities to hear from these careers in these different, kind of non-traditional fields. One of our proudest accomplishments last year was our career fair. This was something we haven't done since I've been working here, and we really wanted to, again, connect students with career personnel. And what we did was we targeted the sophomore year. We thought that was a good year to kind of start the exploration process prior to them starting to think more about post-high school planning their junior year. So what we did was we started with a lesson with our sophomores where we had them on NAVYANCE and really doing an interest inventory, and again, talking about how your interests and your values and your skills can tie into different careers. We then had them identify certain careers that they were gonna be interested in. And then a month later, we had a career fair where we brought in about forty local career representatives into our two gyms. We had each student, they had three careers that they had identified that they wanted to meet with, and then we had some open time where they could meet with additional careers. And both the students and the career reps both had very positive experiences about the experience and the interaction between the career reps, talking about how interactive our students were, how interested they seemed in the careers, and our students gained a lot of interest. For some of the careers they talked to, maybe it ruled out that career. For other careers, maybe it sparked an interest, and some of them went to careers they probably weren't interested in that they now have a newfound interest in. So that's something that we'd like to continue this year.
I heard good feedback about that last year from my sophomore last year. He came home and told me that he met with someone who owned his own gym. I remember talking about that, and I forget some of the other ones, but overall, he said it was well received from the guys.
So we tried to have a diverse group of careers, you know, some were college bound, some were non-college bound, and just, again, some unique, we had an underwater diver engineer that was there. So just expose students to some other careers and kind of broaden their minds. The last initiative that was started by Maggie last year is our Trojan Community Council. This team was comprised of administrators, teachers, parents, community members, students, and the goal was to try to identify some of the multiple pathways for post-high school for students to be able to explore. We dove into some other school districts and what they do. We looked at our own practices and what we do. One of our outcomes that we were hoping to get out of this was to create a website that was gonna be interactive for students where they could really, again, explore different career pathways, but also identify what you can do while still at Simsbury High School and still with the Simsbury community to help you better prepare for some of those pathways. And Meg Lavoy, who is one of our art teachers and doing an internship with Maggie this year, has taken that project on, and we're calling the Planning for High School and Beyond website, and she has just gotten started on putting that together. Maggie and I meet with her, and we're gonna try to continue to grow that website and, you know, hopefully make that somewhere that students and parents can go to just get a wealth of information.
So, yep, the next bucket is compassionate and connected school culture. When Maggie gave me this area to do and I started to look at the celebrations, I first looked at it and was like, oh, this is where we list our AP scholars and going through all of these things. And then I realized what a great community to live and work in when kind of the standard is to talk about how many AP scholars you produce, how many national merit semifinalists you have, and how you compete for state championships in sports, et cetera. It's really, you know, and it's not an exhaustive list. We probably had to work hard to whittle it down to put some of these things on here. But a lot of excellence, as you can see right in there, some of it is, again, the things that we produce every year, which is excellent. Some of them are unique or new to the year. The Tiny Trojans Play School is a wonderful addition to our school to see little kids running around the hallways away from the academic classes, not disrupting the classes. But when you go in there and you see some of the students that are working with the kids, they're kids that may be spending time in Scott, Georgia, and I's office, and to watch them interact with those kids are just like, it's just, it's really, really cool. And the kids seem to love it, the little kids as well. One of the things you may not know, because I certainly didn't know, I had to look it up, the AP International Diploma, we have one of those. That is a student who scores three or higher on five or more AP exams. The AP exams have to fall into four different categories that they have, one of which is a language category, and it has to be, two exams that you pass have to be in two different languages. So you could actually like, AP Lang falls into that, but you can't just have two of those. You have to also score higher in that. And then it gets kind of a math and different other ones. And then I think what makes it the international is you either have to be from an international school. Obviously, we're not an international school, or you send your scores to a university outside of the United States. So one of our students must have done that, obviously, and qualified for that. I don't know how often we have those. That was new to me. And in addition to that, the CIAC Battle of the Fans, I want to point out, that, that's great. We won it twenty-four, twenty-five, but it really, kind of like, we're talking about the excellence of the Girls Lax Program of year after year. A student the year before had submitted a video, and that got the ball rolling. And then these kids came in, and we didn't know when the CIAC was gonna come to a basketball game, actually. And they showed up, and we had a great crowd there, and the kids ended up winning that. So that was wonderful. So you can see a lot of different celebrations there. Next three slides that I'll talk about are in regard, every year we give our surveys to our students, to our staff, and to our parents. And here are some of the highlights of that. I want to point out though that these are great, but I want to remind you from last year, we had incredible growth last year. So to see the growth from where we were last year to this year really is a two-year window of some pretty excellent trajectories that we've had. Again, that theme of gathering momentum and keeping with that momentum. But these are the families' results that we have up here in terms of pretty significant growth for my child's school is supportive, staying at a pretty high level where you feel safe in the school. And then the staff at my child's school have respect for all families. Again, another ten-point growth. I want to make sure I'm saying this, so jump in if I'm wrong on this, but those numbers are not the neutral. So like, if you throw, so it's not like, for eighty-one percent, eighty-one percent is like likely or highly likely. It's not neutral. It's strong, and then there's disagree, strongly disagree. So there's a neutral category, and those are the ones that don't even include that. So it's, those are very, I think, excellent numbers.
Do you know the percentage of families that participated?
We had a hundred and eighty-nine families participate in that.
Out of how many were asked?
Oh.
It's not all four breeds.
It is.
Families, it is.
Families, it's all.
Families, yes. So it's about a ten percent return. Which is somewhat expected.
Yeah, Dr. Bachelor would say that's within the, she looks for a ten, yeah, statistically, I always ask her, ten to twenty percent is what you would hope for, so it's on the lower end. I'd love to see more. But it's still within the consideration for statistically being relevant.
Okay, so asking you guys a question. I had the great, great numbers overall, obviously, but I'm curious. So school is supportive, eighty-one, safe, eighty-four. And then it dips up just a little, obviously, just a little bit. Interested, how, what do you think is going on there? If I feel that my child's school is safe, but yet I'm saying that my child's school, well, let's just say, less, a less amount of families have said that it's got respect for all families. It's just, it's just an interesting dip today.
I think it has to do with the physical safety of the building. They see security, they see an SRO, they see a, you know, so there's that versus a, maybe a family respect, a level of, you know, just culturally different or. Or maybe they don't feel as though discipline procedures were fair or something to that. But overall, they still feel as though that when my kid is at school, they're physically safe. That's how I interpret, certainly.
I think the comments reflected that.
Yes, they did.
A discipline felt like people weren't handled, or not, someone got this treatment and we got this treatment. Those perceptions was a part of that. The next slide is the staff, ones that we would like to celebrate. And we see obviously some pretty significant growth in the first two in terms of input with regards to professional decisions. That's a pretty easy one to trace, too. The state, the PGP process, the personal growth process, the plans that the teachers have. We start our meetings, actually, we started them this week with teachers, really shifted to what do you want to do? In the past, it's a lot has been in regard to, hey, here's what the school is doing, this is what you should do. It's like, what do you want to do? And so individual teachers have done individual goals. The meetings have been exceptional. We've really enjoyed them. We have a beginning of the year, middle of the year check-in and end of year. And the way the staff talked about it very enthusiastically, which hasn't happened necessarily in the past in regard to my, my goals I've set for the year. It's kind of just been this rope process that I have to do versus now, hey, I really enjoy reading this book. I'm pursuing AI, a lot of our teachers are looking at and different things. So I think that directly ties to that. The staff at my school recognized me as an individual. I think those probably go somewhat hand in hand in that. And then the growth in the, I'm proud of the professional culture in the Simsbury Public Schools. I don't think it's tied to that one thing, but I think that one thing definitely has a lot to do with it in regard to their ownership over their own personal goals.
That last one, fifty-nine percent, is still kind of low, in my opinion, right? For professional, do you have any ideas, touch points or comments as to why that is? That they don't feel they have a culture?
Let me really say it. I think we honed in on attendance. I think there were some pieces about people being, feeling though, as though they have, they're not treated professionally if they've been given conversation about attendance. That came up in the comments. Because we really did put a, you know, an emphasis on you being in the classroom matters. And when you get into significant absences of thirteen, fourteen, well, that may not seem like a lot. It is. Those are thirteen, fourteen days where, you know, learning could be halted or very little is taking place. So I personally, from the comments, I think it had to do with, hey, sometimes I don't feel as, I'm treated as professionally because I've been, had a conversation about my attendance.
And that's up to forty-two percent, so they're starting to kind of grips with it.
Correct.
Can I ask a question, too? Because these are some pretty large shifts from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. Was the language changed at all in the?
That's why we've kept those ones and I have it over a three-year period we look at. We actually looked at some of the growth over one-year periods and three-year periods. They're exactly the same. I also think that we've asked a lot of input from teachers around curriculum alignment, redoing curriculum. Hey, can you come together and help us to refocus this after COVID? And it got, I think a lot of teachers have felt that their input matters when it comes to their content, their department, and making sure that we've got things the way that they should as it relates to what they believe is, you know, good instruction. So.
And did you have around the same amount of people that you questioned staff-wise?
Yes, we had a hundred and four certified staff take the survey this year and ninety-two non-certified. And last year it was almost identical, it was a little less on the certified staff. But yeah, still hovering right about a hundred people.
What is that as a percentage of the total staff?
We have, well, see, we have some people who are shared, so I don't, sometimes they go on Henry James, their numbers and not ours because they're shared dependent. So we have about a hundred and twenty-three that I count for like a faculty meeting. So we had a hundred and four of those, but I do think that we've got. Yes, it's the majority, hundred percent. We give them time to do it. We basically say at the beginning of this professional development time, please start by taking this and then come to PD. So they've got time carved out. Yep.
That's a smart idea.
So.
All right, and then students and some of the growth that we've seen there in terms of the positive energy. We're gathering momentum, obviously want to get that higher as well. But the school, we're moving in the right direction on that one. I can ask an adult for help, up to sixty-eight percent of growth on that. And my school has extracurricular clubs that I am interested in where at eighty-three percent.
That was a new question.
That was a new question, yeah.
It's a good question.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was five hundred and seventy-nine students that took that survey with the majority being, we had a hundred and ninety-nine in grade nine, one eighty-seven in grade ten. So we had a lot, over a hundred in every grade that took it. Seniors didn't have to, but it was open to them if they wanted to. And we had sixty-six students who took it from senior year.
What do you attribute the less than fifty percent numbers to from the positive energy?
They're high schoolers and sometimes, sometimes they think we're ridiculous with our energy. You know, that's one that had a lot in the neutral. You know, and I think when you ask a lot of students who are, you know, positive energy, they're like, oh, you know, so it is, it was a lot in the neutral. So because you have the two, you have strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree. So you get a lot in that, eh, fifty-fifty. Some days are great, some days are not.
You also had some protocols change.
Yes.
On the, on the tardy side.
People did not love if you bought those numbers.
So.
Our students didn't love those.
And the cell phone.
The cell phone.
You'll see the impact.
Yeah, you definitely see that. The next two slides are related to school discipline.
Students or staff, like you said, it was a hunch reach class. Is there a way or would you want to just make that mandatory if you offered it like during connections or something?
We do.
We do.
And sometimes the kids will choose not to. But yes, I think that's why you had a hundred and ninety-nine grade stu-, nine and it trickled a little bit. Because some students will choose that they're not going to participate.
That's fine.
Yeah, but we do carve it out for them.
Did you have any challenges, I mean, regarding doing each, all these climate surveys between students and families and teachers that you're going to be assessing for, for next year? What were some of the challenges that you got that came forward in each of these three areas?
It's coming up, but yes, it is coming up.
On this slide, did twenty-two, twenty-three school year, was it any higher, the positive energy, or was it even lower?
Twenty-two, I can tell you.
It was very kind of him.
It was very kind.
Yeah, he was trying to be someone.
Keep going and then I'll find it.
Actually, I don't understand that with the question, I'm sorry, Josh's question about the hundred and nine, what was that?
I was, well, I was asking Maggie and the team was, the student, it was a good number of students responding, but it wasn't like a hundred percent.
No, it was a hundred and nine of like fourteen hundred, right?
Oh.
No.
Oh, it's like said ten percent. That was families, that was families. Okay, I was.
So I understand families, you can't make mandatory.
Correct.
Staff and students, you could.
So we had a hundred and nine of like a hundred and, so not every student was polled.
No, so there were a hundred and ninety-nine freshmen, for example, who filled it out.
Got it.
And a hundred and fifty-something sophers, and the number went down.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
So it was fifty-six percent, so it was actually higher three years ago. But again, when you look at what this past year, we had thirty-five percent of the kids who were neutral. And we only had, we had four percent who said they strongly disagreed, ten percent who said they just disagree. So we're talking about, you know, fourteen.
Change the cell phone policy.
Cell phone policy.
The bathroom situation, those three things alone are going to piss off like a lot of kids with a little bit. Those were not small changes.
Yeah.
Can't look at my phone?
So with that, again, the discipline that that's tied into this, you can, you can see the difference that that has occurred here. We, we've stayed pretty similar to the drug referrals. The fights have dropped significantly by more than fifty percent. The class cuts have dropped in that, it's still a number that's high and it's actually a focus of the administrative team of our PLC. We're looking at class cuts and, and look, going to kind of come up with some policies around all of that. The number of students went up a little bit, the number of total days went up a little bit. I think that's tied a lot to, we've become, you're, you're getting a lot more discipline in certain things. And I can tell you, like, I've had kids, the kids have been great, it's been wonderful this year. Before Scott came here dealing with the older kids, I was dealing with the freshmen. And a line I heard was like, kids are like drawn at each other a little bit. It's like, you ain't worth ten days. Now they know what the discipline is, like, all right, I'm not, I'm not.
Suspension, suspension.
Yeah, so they, it's, it's working. And I think, I, I believe we'll see that number go down over the course of this year, but who knows what can happen in the course of a school year. With all of that, expulsions have gone down, total days ISS has gone up. We think we're in a good spot. Again, the expectations have been laid out, it's been very clear. We're, we don't even use that, that word that happened of the illness for years ago. We're out of that now. We have set rules, we've, we have expectations. And the kids have been responding very, very positively to kick off this school year, without a doubt. The momentum is moving clearly in the right direction. Yes.
On that, the, two things, one on the class cuts.
Yep.
Right? For next year or whatever, this, I love this slide, this is, I don't remember this last year, so I love it.
Yeah.
And I love numbers. The two fifty-seven to the one eighty, how many kids is that? Or is it one kid who did thirty, thirty classes? You know what I'm saying? Then it's five kids with thirty classes.
That this year.
We actually, good, that's a question we had as well to go through. And it's, we're on track, we're on track to track this, Georgia just said is the line. We actually have created a document which we, Scott, Georgia and I share.
We're on track.
And put names in and look at that. We're still working on defining class cut, too. That's, you think it would be so, oh, pretty fine, but.
It's fair to say that that, that, that number, yes, there were frequent flyers in both of those numbers.
Because it could be an elevated number because it's lush kids, but they're just doing it more often.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And same with the, the numbers of students versus the total days. It's the same thing, that total day seems like it's a lot, a hundred and sixty-eight, but it's only twenty-seven students. Out of how many at Simsbury High?
Yeah, a little over thirteen hundred.
Yeah.
The perspective is a hundred and eighty, it's one class cut a day in a huge high school.
Yeah.
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 That's a good percentage.
It is. Interesting, yeah.
These are good numbers.
Yeah.
You're a numbers guy, that's why you're.
I thought it was.
But for anyone who don't watch this, OSS and ISS and stuff, they don't know at home, so.
OSS, out-of-school suspension, ISS, in-school suspension.
I think it's important to try to share.
So OSS, it's really kind of mandated by the state. It has to be a violent act, it has to be gang activity, it has to be drugs, has to be weapons or a safety issue overall. You can't just, you know, get out of here, you're, you know, you stole a milk, like, that's not happening. So it's pretty specific to that. All right, and then the next slide, which is really, you'll see the results of this are staggering. And this is tied to the attendance policy, which not everyone is a fan of. But it's, when people aren't fans of this, we, we start throwing these numbers around and people get quiet pretty quickly. Because you look at the number, the, how those numbers have dropped in terms of the tardies. And that, you have to, you have to look at that from a human perspective of interruptions to the learning environment. In September, in twenty-three, twenty-four, you had nine hundred and seventy-seven interruptions to the learning environment while classes already started. We've cut that down to two hundred and ninety-five, still kind of a high number, but, I mean, significantly less than it ever has been. And it just keeps adding up as you go through all of that. So we're very happy about that and proud of that. It really, these policies have been tough on some people, but they've wrapped their heads around them. And it's completely changed culture of, of our teachers as well. They're begging us to do something about it because it's just, you do, we see it when we do an observation and someone walks in. I'm sure the students can talk about it, you're sitting in class and someone walks, another teacher says, oh, we got to be, we got, it just, now we can focus on learning. So it's really been positive.
That whole tardy thing is, for me, is always interesting because we can talk about the whole logistics aspect of getting to the high school on time. I, I bet you that, I mean, as, as someone who's driven kids there and now has kids driving there, the number of kids that are there at seven eating breakfast in their car in the parking lot is probably at an all-time high.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to be late. So, and unfortunately, it just, it stinks that they have to get there that early because of the traffic jam issue or whatever. But in order to not be late, you, they know they got to get there at seven. Because if it's after, they're leaving the house after seven-ten, seven-fifteen, they will be late.
We've seen a real significant increase in our freshmen and sophomores taking the bus.
Correct.
We actually see full buses to a degree that we haven't seen in years. And it's interesting because the traffic jam is at seven oh-five to seven-ten now and not seven-twenty to seven-twenty-five.
Correct.
So we have a, a new shift in that time where it's a, it's definitely an interesting thing is people are up there in the cafeteria area. Georgia and Scott do the front with the kids coming in. So you definitely see a lot of underclassmen taking the bus.
I'm assuming students are all meeting their friends there in the parking lot and they're all sitting at their car eating.
Yes, they are.
To clarify, this is not just late to class. I just wanted to say to school, this is everything, like third period, fourth period.
No, this is just UNTs. This is unexcused tardies to school.
Okay.
To school, this is the start of the day.
Just period one. All right, that's why we laughed because UNTs versus TTCs, I made that comment at graduation because the kids know tardy to class means, you know, you were in the bathroom too long and you were just tardy, you know, took quick minute to class versus I came in late to school.
This is incredible. So I just want to commend you all on this shift. And I'm sure it's impacted families and made it difficult in some ways. But to have more of these kids in their seats on time so learning can start, I mean, these, these shifts are just mind-blowing. Congratulations.
Can we ask our student rep on, on her feel about it?
What do you think about it? Not to put you on the. In the beginning. Um, but it's, it's definitely way better. It's insane. I agree that everybody's there in the morning now. My entire friend group, I'm in a very nerdy, responsible friend group. And we're all there, every single car in the parking lot is my friends. Because we're all so paranoid to be late. Because I would also say that like coaches and, and people outside of school have done a really good job in like not letting you get away with it. I feel like before, if you were late to school, I would come to practice and my coach would be like, eh, you were late, it's fine. Now she'll send me home and she'll send people home. So it's like, and it's like a.
It's a major culture shift.
Right, right. And it's, goes the same in like in choir, when we have after-school choir and I was late, or I'm never late. When someone else is like, they have to leave. And I think that that's definitely made, that's why people keep coming on time because it's so like shameful to have to leave practice because you were late in the morning. So I do think it's been really effective in making people come to school, even though it kind of sucked in the beginning.
Right? Well, sorry.
Do you think, though, again, just tie it back to the person, would that number be even lower if you looked at the individual people?
Oh, absolutely.
We have very.
We have, we have chronic offenders. And your question about like after the first period, it's absolutely not an issue after the, I mean, once kids are in the building, ninety-nine percent of our kids are in class when the bell rings. The one percent is like three kids, too, who do it repeatedly. That's it, you know, generally speaking. But yeah, yeah. We'll see, yeah, it's definitely.
I just want to reiterate, too, that if there is inclement weather, too, and we've noticed there's trap, we just say to kids, go. Like, they don't have to stop, like, we're really mindful. Or if a kid has a unique, we had a kid dump a coffee completely down the front of them, we got you, you know? So there's an element of also understanding that you can have those days, too, so.
I found that, too. I've also found that like if you have some sort of obscene circumstance, like one of my friends, her tire popped and the person in the office, like she was too awkward to say anything. And then she ended up emailing, I think probably you, about the attendance and they like flagged her out of it. So it's been like an understanding process.
Yeah, things happen, I can assure you, we get phone calls, I won't even, it's incredible.
There's a lot, I know there's a lot left, so keep going.
All right.
All right, well, I get to talk to you about, we're going to shift gears a little bit to our future focus areas for this year. And I just want to say on this slide that our SHS goals are always rooted in the strategic plan and the goals that we've all set together. So this year, just want to highlight one goal that really kind of hits on all four of these. And that is we're keeping that momentum up with curriculum revision. We are using the vision of the graduate and other mechanisms to look at that curriculum, look at the state of it, think about bringing back those common assessments you've probably heard about before, meaning the same assessment across all sections of a course, regardless of what teacher you have. And we're working very hard on that to ensure that we're meeting all of those same high markers that we've already talked about in the presentation, but also hitting those vision of the graduate skills. Okay, so to talk about this a little bit more, we're focused on the common assessments, feedback to students. So another big piece of what we're working on in the curriculum revision in our professional learning communities is looking at our feedback that students are getting and making sure that it's actionable and that students know sort of what moves to do next. And we, again, vision of the graduate piece that I've already talked about. I'm going to talk a little bit more about intervention in another slide. So one of the things I wanted to say about vision of the graduate in terms of. So, one of the things I wanted to say about vision of the graduate, in terms of our instructional focus, is one of the most impactful pieces that the vision of the graduate focus area has brought to us is a major, um, rise in the, in the amount of self-reflection that we're asking students to do, as well as goal setting. So, we have, um, through our Connect program, and through the work we've done in Capstone, sort of trickling down to foundational courses, really ask students far more often to reflect on their own learning, as well as to set their own goals. So we have, um, some great lessons that we brought in to Connect several times last year, that we're gonna continue to build upon. It gives us great data as an administrative team as we look to plan, and it gives us great feedback to the, um, disciplines and the, the groups of teachers who are working on the curriculum, to say, hey, our kids are telling us that they've had a tremendous amount of experience with critical thinking, communication and collaborator, they need some more practice, they're saying they're not having as much opportunity to practice their skills around innovation or global citizenship, and so that's great data that we can sort of feed back as we go through that curriculum review cycle. And one of the biggest celebrations that builds on our work last year is building capacity around our intervention programming. So, we have really beefed up all of our interventions and have some new things on the horizon, a lot of this is behind-the-scenes collaboration with Henry James and great vertical alignment there, where we have taken some time last year to really look at what are the students at Henry James getting, and how do we continue that? How do we continue to meet those needs and build on that at the high school? We also, may seem like a small change, but we moved where our intervention was housed, okay, so it was like down by the library, and it was sort of off the beaten track. What we did was, we took our math interventionists and we moved them right next door to the math lab. So what you have in math and English is you have the department supervisor in an office, you have the lab, math lab, writing center, and then you have the intervention teachers right next door. What that's done is improve the access to the discipline content area teachers. So now, instead of being on the first floor as a math interventionist, you are up on the third floor in the same wing as all of the math teachers, you're next door to the, um, gentleman who runs the math lab, and there's far more collaboration with those interventionists. We have phenomenal people behind those interventions, we're very, very fortunate. Um, we had a phenomenal math interventionist who was part-time, who finally retired, um, she just kept giving us one more year and twenty more hours, um, and I think enough grandchildren came along and she said, I'm finally retiring, this is it. And we were so nervous, and we managed to find someone phenomenal who just comes right into the fold, and they really work so well collaboratively, um, to just watch each other and see what's working, and this is phenomenal uh, small group instruction where kids are bringing in that work, and we're sort of helping them with the work that they have, but going back to those skills that maybe they need that reteaching on, and slowing it down and really getting to the root of where they're going wrong and giving them that one-to-one. So we have two math interventionists, two reading, we added executive functioning, so that idea of help with workflow management, project management, how do you study, how do you get ready for these big tests, um, how do you manage your Google classrooms, how do you set goals? That is a direct continuation from the work of Henry James, so that is our literacy specialists getting together, collaborating strongly, talking to all of us, and us making that decision, that we wanted to continue use some Title One funding to add that intervention in. It's going very, very well, we found a phenomenal certified teacher who just isn't quite, um, ready to jump back into the workforce, and this was a perfect fit for her, which is amazing, and lastly, um, this year, we're gonna move that sort of in-school suspension to a little bit more innovative, a little bit more, um, get with the times here, that, it, yes, we're gonna have the ISS always, but we're also going to have some behavioral intervention, so setting some goals around behavior, making sure that we're getting to not just that discipline, but the understanding of what's happening and why, and how do we make that better? We have great resources, capacity-wise, we have, um, a BCBA, so a board-certified behavior analyst who's phenomenal, and she can advise us on those things, so while she won't necessarily deliver the intervention, she's there to give us feedback and say, hey, this is what's going on with the kid, here's what we're thinking, can you give me feedback on this plan? We take the plan, we put it into action, so all of these are, um, on the rise, going very well, we're really excited about them.
On the executive functioning intervention, is that only accessible to students who have IEPs, or is this accessible to everybody?
I was gonna say, I want that.
So, we have, so through our student intervention team, it, as well as that collaboration between the literacy specialists at both schools, um, I will say, right now, we probably prioritize ninth and tenth graders, and, um, not students who have IEPs, because they're gonna get those services in their educational support class, they have a dedicated period for that, but this would be students who might have a five oh-four plan, um, so they, they might have some of those needs, but they don't, they're not, um, under the special education umbrella, and also just, um, sort of communication with Henry James from eighth to ninth of, you know, here's this array of services we have, what do you think is the best fit for this individual? And, um, to the credit of everyone involved, you know, most students, once they, they might be a little nervous at first, what is this thing on my schedule? But once they get in and they meet the people, um, they're very happy to be there, a lot of, a lot of the kids want to stay in that intervention. So, you know, this also could come from school counseling, you know, a parent calls up and says, hey, my ninth or tenth grader is really struggling with sort of managing all these assignments, I'm seeing zeros pop up, um, they're not sure, you know, what they missed and why, and that might be a time for us to say, why don't we try out this intervention? And basically, it's in lieu of a traditional study hall, so, you know, um, those underclassmen would be sitting in a sort of study hall working independently, and instead, they're over in this intervention.
Alright, in the next area.
Um, so, I have the next couple slides, uh, only two weeks in, I was happy and fortunate to speak tonight. Much different setting than the last time I was here, it's cooler, um, but through the, through the surveys conducted, um, last year, you know, one of the things that the students really, uh, the data shows is that the students spoke to wanting to continue some of the, um, positive ways to celebrate students, or diverse ways that we kind of, um, kind of acknowledge and kind of improve that school culture. Um, Mr. Sullivan asked me on the way in, you know, what's the biggest difference, or, and I kind of took it as like, one of the biggest positives coming into the last couple weeks and kind of diving in, and it is, um, the culture when you walk in the building, it, it's different, it's, it's so positive, uh, welcoming to everybody, um, and I think that the survey results from the kids in the past really speaks to that, they want to continue that. Um, one of the ways that Miss Adella and I, right when I started, we kind of were just chatting about different things to come, um, and one of which was like the focus groups, and really involving the kids in that process and families, um, what are the priorities and where can we still continue to improve that trend? Um, and I think that'll help us guide our work and, and to continue to, uh, see that progress, um, within the building. Um, I was really fortunate, um, to dive right in in week one, um, we had an awesome week, you know, I, throughout, those of you who were involved in my interview process, I'm big on student connection, I'm, I'm super passionate about it, and they really, you guys tested me in week one to make sure that was true, um, I did avoid the blow-up costume on the pep rally, I don't know how, but I did, um, but, uh, the pep rally was filled with such positive energy, um, the kids were so well-behaved, like, I was going in like, alright, I'm supervising, my head's on a swivel, I'm ready to diffuse everything, it was so positive, the kids had such an awesome experience, um, and it was in such a positive, inclusive way, um, that was really awesome to see in, in one of my first few days. Um, the homecoming football game Friday night, again, packed house, lot of positive energy, um, the kids were so supportive, you know, the game didn't go our way per se, but kids had an awesome time, the families were supportive, really great event for the community, uh, met some new people, met some people I, I knew that I didn't know were connected to Sims very, I knew them outside of town, so that was really cool too, and then, um, Saturday night, homecoming dance, again, like, I just keep repeating myself, but the kids were so well-behaved, they're so inclusive, they're so positive, they went and had a great time, um, I don't know whose decision it was in the end, but the decision to do it in the courtyard, I was like, how are we fitting everyone in here? It turned out so awesome, the pitcher in the top middle, um, from some daredevil that, I don't know how they got up there, but I didn't approve it, but. Um, I, I mean, it speaks to the environment, like, uh, the kids had an awesome time, it wa, it was a really great way for me to kind of meet a whole bunch of people that wasn't disciplined, that wasn't, you know, in a formal classroom setting, um, it was laid back, uh, and, and the kids, it was a great way for me to meet some kids that were really involved in those, um, setting up like the pep rally, you know, met a bunch of cheerleaders, I had a lot to do with that, and the different program, uh, different groups that were uh, heavily involved in organizing that, uh, the structures that I'm kind of coming into, I feel incredibly fortunate, um, and, and it's been an awesome first couple weeks and a lot of celebration, and you can tell that the, the kids come in the building smiling, having a good time, there's a group that come in in the morning, and they have their spirit days for every game, and they all dress up, and I'm like, I'm trying to figure out what the spirit day is for that game, and sometimes it's tough like today, but they're all, they come in with such a positive energy, it's, it's a really great environment to join.
And our last, um, area of focus this year is premier workforce, so we talked a bit about this at the previous board meeting with NIOSC, so I feel as though, um, this group is well-informed, but we would continue to ask families to take the NIOSC survey, which will help us in our self-evaluation this year to really reflect on the things that are going well at Sims very high school, and then areas for improvement. And then also on there is just our continued focus, as I'm sure many of us are, with AI. Um, how is that impacting our students, when can they use it, how can they use it, when should they not? Um, and we've been having a lot of conversations, Georgia actually had a group after school of, um, professionals and teachers, you know, working on things, um, with AI, and then each teacher was asked to very clearly in their syllabus, put how they would like AI to be addressed in their classroom, it could be, you know, not at all, it could be, yes, use it on homework as a tool, or, hey, I'll let you know when opportunities to use AI will be present, we asked every teacher to make that very clear to students, and also at open house. Um, so, the last slide is really the challenges ahead, um, with the increase in internships, um, with the increase in really wanting our students to get out and see what's available for trades and all things career-oriented, we are seeing an increase in other districts with a career coordinator. Um, so that's something you might see in an upcoming, um, budget, um, presentation, that we're really looking at how we might utilize that person, because when you're doing these internships, it's very individualized, it's not like you're taking a class on a field trip, you're making a real individualized plan that takes a lot of time, a lot of coordination, um, and you need somebody who can really focus on what's available. Um, we are gonna continue to revise our student interventions, as Georgia just shared, we'll continue to look at those, we know kids are gonna come to us with different needs, and how do we flex and make sure that we've got what's appropriate for them? And then that idea of restorative practices within our in-school suspension, I think that we, you know, we certainly need a place where students are going to have to serve that consequence, but how are we helping them to repair, rebuild and re-enter, um, our community, because we know that we want them there, we know we make mistakes, um, but how do we do that in a little bit more of a systematic way, um, that's specifically built for our high school students, um, and not cheesy and contrived? Um, so, and at that, I would just say, we really feel very, very excited about the year, this idea that we've gathered a lot of momentum, um, things are in a really good spot to continue to make progress forward, and, um, I think I speak for all of us that we just feel lucky to be able to, um, work in a town that's supported with awesome kids, so thank you.
Matt, one question, just, yeah, just, there's three goals you're focusing on, not the sustainability one, like, any comments on that, or?
I do that more through the lens of like, working with our custodial, like, with Kyle and things like that, so not a public-facing one, but more one that we do together, also with like, equipment and purchasing, um, we've tried to work through, uh, vendors now, so I, I, yes, I'm still doing it, but not, um, they're, they're leading me more with my input, if you will.
Got it, makes sense, thank you.
I have two questions, was the, um, was Greg questions actually, did they, do you think that the counselors have enough time to meet with each student, not just because of the workload of the PPTs and stuff, do you feel like that's at all a challenge to balance that each student is leaving Sims very high, especially their senior year, having that one-on-one time with counselors?
Me, you could always hope for more one-on-one, but I think we're, we have good manageable caseloads, and we make it a point to meet with every student every year, uh, at least once, but it's usually multiple times for each student, and I think the relationships grow over the course of the four years, and by the time they're juniors and seniors, I think a lot of our counselors have really good rapport and relationships with their students.
And then on the percentage of internships, you had said twenty, around twenty kids had that internship? What was the, how many kids were, did the capstone that year, so is that less than ten percent, did it, or more?
So you have, not the whole senior class, but I would say probably eighty percent of the senior class does it, so.
And some juniors or?
Some juniors, yeah, so some juniors could be doing it, um, so yeah, you probably had about three hundred kids a year doing it at Capstone.
I would just add that, in some cases, the students might do their capstone embedded within a career, but then also do an internship as well. So we have some students who take advantage of summer internships that actually aren't related to the capstone, um, Liz McKay and, and Baird Faithful, um, as well as the counseling staff sort of keep that data, so we do have, outside of the capstone, we also have some internships going on as well.
We also have in-school internships, like the Trojan Tech team and the writing center, and I wasn't really, I wasn't counting those as part of the internship, I was talking more about the external community-based internships.
Sue, I think you have an intern this year, right?
I will, yeah, there's someone that has sites to be an assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, I met her today.
I'm shadowing.
Thank you very much.
Great job, thank you very much.
Thank you, give us a good work.
Thanks, Matt.
Good night.
Thank you.
Alright, Amy with the year-end financial results.
Yes, so some good news to report this evening, um, at the first page you have your revenues as per usual, there's been no updates to the revenues since the last time I reported out. Um, all of our revenue income had come in by the time we did our last quarterly, so I'm just gonna move on to the expenditures, which gives us our, um, small surplus for this year, which I will take you through. So on page two of your expenditure report, you have what you're used to seeing is your, your chart there of your original budget, your year-to-date expended for fiscal year twenty-five, um, so you'll see that we had a small surplus this year of about a hundred and eleven thousand, which is great news compared to all the other quarterlies that I give you that are projected deficit. So I'll take you through some of the line items that add us to that surplus, starting with, um, instruction. So with our instructional accounts, they were underspent by about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, you can see there that there was a few areas that made up the majority of that, um, that surplus. So we had salaries through some transitions and retirements that were anticipated of about two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, we had some services for data processing under our contracted services of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, um, that we didn't utilize this year, we cut back from the prior year. Um, you'll see there that there's supplies of about ninety-one thousand dollars, and this is, um, there wasn't anything in particular that stood out, um, within the supplies, it was just numerous, multiple, um, supply line items that translated to the ninety-one thousand savings, it was small savings in the line item itself. Um, and then we were underspent in our software account of about thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, so on the instruction side, that makes up, um, about five hundred and thirty-six, and then going down to the people transportation, you'll see in here, we're kind of offsetting that five hundred and thirty-six right away with the people transportation, where we overspent by about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So this is something that you may recall during our budget process, we had talked through our challenges on the special ed. We had talked through our challenges on the special education side. One of those challenges was our pupil transportation. And that was something that we um corrected going into the fiscal year twenty-six budget. So hopefully that's the last time you see a deficit in our pupil transportation. On going down to the next one, the operation of plant, we were overspent by about ninety thousand dollars. Um, if you recall during my last quarterly report outs, we saw um significant increases in our electricity this year. So the electricity alone, we were in excess of budget by about three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, but we had some savings in our propane account of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And then we had some salary savings of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, moving down to the maintenance of the plant, we were underspent by about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, so the operation of the plant and the maintenance of a plant kind of go together. So since we knew we were gonna be over in the operation of plant, we kind of held back on the maintenance of plant so we could offset the deficit within their own budget. Moving on to the next page, um, the insurance and the pension. You'll see that we were underspent by about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, this is just the health insurance related to the staffing vacancies that I spoke about under the instruction line item. Um, and then food services. Again, this is similar to last year. Um, we're overspent by eighty-two thousand dollars. According to the state of Connecticut, we do not meet um certain educational criteria for our food services director. And until she completes that criteria, um, we are not allowed to charge her salary to the food services fund. And therefore it hits the operating budget. Um, the student body activities account, we're overspent by about forty-three thousand dollars. Um, this is something that I think ended up being a budgeting error that we're going to fix in the upcoming budget, but we'll look into that more just to make sure and make that slight correction. Um, the community services, this is where we charge the custodial overtime and the supplies for our custodial staff. When we have um individuals or organizations that rent out our facilities. So when they rent out our facilities, our um custodial staff will go and clean up and get in some overtime for the building usage. Um, and there is an offsetting revenue on the town side that funds this. So on the Board of Ed side, you're only gonna see the expenditures, but then on the town side, there is an offsetting revenue. So even though it looks like you're overspent, you're getting additional revenue to cover those costs. Um, under the equipment replacement, we were overspent by about ninety-six thousand dollars. Um, so for years and years and years, our open choice grant typically covers about four hundred thousand dollars of our tech equipment purchases. Um, however, in the current year, our open choice grant was reduced by um a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And um, this was noted in the prior quarterlies when we have our ten-one enrollment numbers. And therefore the operating budget had to absorb the additional tech expenditures, leading to an overage of about that ninety-six thousand dollars. So in total, that's how we get to our a hundred and eleven thousand dollar surplus. This was presented, um, actually, if you go all the way down, I'm sorry, to the non-lapsing fund summary first. You'll see that our balance as of six thirty twenty-four, um, we had eight hundred and sixty thousand in our non-lapsing fund. We had anticipated utilizing um some of those funds in fiscal year twenty-five. But since we ended up in a surplus position, we no longer have to utilize those funds. So our non-lapsing fund will remain healthy at eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, this report was brought to the Board of Education Finance Subcommittee at our last meeting. Um, the surplus was discussed with the committee. The um members had a discussion returning some of the ex, or returning all of the excess funds back to the town as a contribution towards the Two Farms Village purchase. And I believe that's something that they wanted to discuss with you all tonight as the full report.
Yeah, it is, it's appropriate.
Sure.
So just a, a couple of things. Thank you for this. I, I just wanted to point out one, one comment, two comments, I guess. On the pupil transportation, I, I just wanted to um commend, we've been talking about this for years. And if you think you have this solved, that, that is a really, really huge, huge benefit. That was as, as, as everybody around the table knows, that is a significant dollar figure that keeps getting at us. So I really appreciate it. And then just a comment, as Amy said, um, just wanna make sure everybody's okay with it. You know, we, at the beginning, when Two Farms Village was being considered, we had been asked for a contribution. And we accept, we, we were willing to do so, um, make contribution towards that, that, that purchase. We were unable to do so because of some of the other expenditures. So it just feels right to, to the majority of us to um, to, to give this, to donate this, give this, I'm not sure what the right word is. Send it back, turn it back. Turn it back to the, to the town um to sort of follow through on, on that commitment. But just wanted to certainly put it out there for, for everybody's discussion or comment if, if anybody has any thoughts or pushback or whatever.
I mean, I'll just give a small bit of context to it. You know, when we were providing updates throughout the year, you'll recall that, you know, the projected percentage of excess cost shifted throughout the year. We thought we were gonna see a deficit approaching probably half a million dollars just in that line item alone. That ended up um through legislation being addressed, um, which kind of really put us in this position in the first place. So I think, to your point, just to support it, I think it makes sense with the consistent conversations and the support we got from the Board of Selectment upfront. Uh, with the initiative that we all think is gonna be very helpful as we move forward, so.
I don't think we need, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just wanna add that in the context of an eighty-five million dollar budget, having an a hundred and eleven thousand dollar surplus, given all of the constant shifts from the state, is remarkable. It's excellent budgeting work. And um, it's such a small fraction that to call it a surplus seems silly almost. But it's nice to be able to give it back to the town as part of our contribution to Farms Village.
I'm all in favor.
I think that sounds significant. Definitely put it.
I think it makes a great, good sense.
I don't think we need to vote on that.
No, no. Excellent. Thank you.
But I think we're all in favor. I think it's important for them, for everyone to know that we are. If we are all in favor.
Yeah, I was on the finance committee, so I'm, you know, my, I'm on board. We need your organizations.
Yes, this is a, a quick one that we can always come back to if there are more questions. It's interesting, there was some new legislation passed, so we're getting this report in just under the wire, which is um, which is a good thing. But um, the reg, the legislation requires the superintendent to report out to the Board of Ed on two specific things. The names of community-based organizations with whom we have uh an MOU or a memorandum of understanding with. And then also the organizations uh that are of the profile of workforce development programs and internships from which the board has partnered with an outside entity. So um Katie was very helpful in uh helping us put together a list in short order. Uh, I won't go through the whole thing. You can see the types of um partnerships that we have under number one in terms of memorandums of understanding. So um, they kind of, they spread the gamut. You can see uh four or five that are with the town. We have several shared service um memorandums with the town from, you know, the, our financial management services, which includes Amy and uh the people in her department, um, the police department with our SROs, information and technology services, which are, are shared, um, part and parcel here, uh, as well as park and recreation. So another example of that is the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center. Let me hear if you're familiar with them, which is crack-run. And we all uh purchase memberships to it's uh for diagnostic placement for students that have various needs. Um, what we did do is in your folder, we put kind of like a next layer of detail, just so you have that. And you can take that with you. And if you have some questions, um, we can certainly flesh out more, more detail. There's costs associated with these. I mean, I figured it could be a conversation during budget or another time, but we wanted to, to get this report out to you. In terms of the workforce development programs, um, we have two. There's the STEP program, which is a program for our special education students um that have internship opportunities out in the community um with other businesses. And then certainly we have our Farmington Valley Transition Academy that you're all very familiar with, which is our transition opportunities, not only for our students, partnership with Farmington, but tuition students from other districts as well. So, um, it's a quick, I know it's a quick over, overview. Again, I put some uh supporting information there and I can certainly, as you take away from this, if there's anything we wanna know about more that we wanna discuss further, we can, we can do that. But it had a September, it kind of had a due date of when we had to get it in front of the board. And Katie, uh, make sure I don't slide on those things.
Thank you. Alright, so that brings us to the next public audience. I think we're okay there. So our next board meeting is the fourteenth of October. Hard to believe we're talking about October already. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Thank you, everybody.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsberry's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsberry's voice.
Simsberry's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsberry Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.